Well, good afternoon, everyone, and it's certainly good to have you here in Gaston County Courthouse for a meeting of the June 16th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. We're glad you're here. I think that we probably may just move the meeting out around, well, even the fountain wasn't on. Move out there and have our meeting and do a little rain dance or something out there. One down the street here said 102 degrees, just made it go. So it feels good in here. If it doesn't go off, no, the lights and everything, that's the air, too. Glad to have everyone with us and also those that are watching by TV tonight. And I first would like to start, well, before our prayer, please, Councilman Pierceall, I want to certainly say before the prayer that this, we were, I think, speaking for the council, that we feel very, very fortunate to have had the ending of another serious situation yesterday in Gastonia and that no one was hurt in an incident. And I want to commend the, all the officials that were there in the five police departments, five departments. It was a sad situation, but it ended, I think, really well. So that's, we were very fortunate and thank you all for that very much for being there for the fellow. I'd like to, at this time, to call on Councilman Pierceall for the prayer and at which we'll have the pledge of allegiance if you will join me with that. Pierceall?
If you bow your heads, please. Father, we come to you today as a council to ask for your guidance and your leadership to show us the decisions that need to be made on behalf of the citizens of Gastonia. We thank you for the wonderful city we live in and the many, many residents that abide here. We know many of those residents are hurting or in need, and we ask that you supply those needs and comfort their hurt. We ask you to place your hand upon those that protect us both home and abroad, keep them safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, moving along here, the item C is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Councilman Gallagher didn't raise his because he's out of town at this time, so I wanted to let everyone know that. Item D is approval of minutes of the regular council meeting of May 5th. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All right, discussion, all in favor, please. And also the council budget work session may 7th, two days later. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Okay, no other discussion, all in favor, please. Okay, we're going to move right along to the item E is, there are two awards here, and I'm certainly honored to be making the first one. I would like to award a proclamation recognizing Mrs. Elizabeth Libby Snuggs McAtier. If you would please join me down, well, you're there, but just join at the, and I'll tell you all about it. This is a very, very important honor, and I am so, I'm honored to be able to read this proclamation to Libby, Mrs. Elizabeth Libby Snuggs McAtier. Whereas on April, they can't see you when you're so short. On April 11th, 2015, during the National Society Colonial Dame Seventeenth Century Conference, 17th Conference in Washington, DC, Mrs. Elizabeth Libby Snuggs McAtier was elected the 43rd President General for the term 2015 through 17. And since the society's establishment's 100 years old, Mrs. McAtier is the only third member from North Carolina to be elected into the office of President General. And whereas Mrs. McAtier is a charter member and past president of the Catawba Valley Chapter in Gastonia, where she has been a member for 16 years, and in 2009 through 2011, she served as North Carolina State President. Mrs. McAtier has held five national championships, chairmanships, my mouth is dry tonight for some reason, I'm sorry, chairmanships or championships.
Not chairmanships.
Three national vice chairmanships and three national offices prior to her election as President General. And she is also an associate member of the Fort San Juan Chapter in Hickory, North Carolina. And whereas additionally, Mrs. McAtier holds memberships in the following landed societies: The National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, National Society Daughters of the American Colonists, National Huguenot Society, National Southern Society of Southern Dames of America, and National Society of United States Daughters of 1812. And whereas Mrs. McAtier is a lifelong resident of Gastonia, North Carolina, she holds a Master's of Business degree from Winthrop University and a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Education Chief from Garden Web University. And after serving for 27 years, Mrs. McAtier retired from the state of North Carolina. And through the years, she has also served on various boards in Gastonia and Gaston County. And whereas as President General of the National Society Colonial Dame Seventeenth Century, Mrs. McAtier is the chief executive officer and official spokesman of the organization, which is headquartered in Washington, DC, and has chapters in 46 states, the District of Columbia and Canada, with membership exceeding 11,000. And during the next two years, she will be traveling throughout the country representing the society. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, John D. Bridgeman, Mayor of the City of Gastonia and the Gastonia City Council hereby recognize Mrs. Elizabeth Libby Snuggs McAtier for her accomplishments, for her outstanding community service, and for her contribution to the preservation, education, and documentation of American history. And witness, wherever I have here unto, set my hand and calls the seal of the City of Gastonia to be affixed this the 16th day of June 2015, signed by Mayor John D. Bridgeman and attested to by City Clerk Virginia Creighton. This is a great, great honor. This is a great honor for Gastonia. And I know how active you've been, and of course, we had discussion about another proclamation about, you know, who you're married to, but we chose to leave that one alone in all seriousness. This is very special, one of 11,000 and in all the 46 states, Libby, and we're proud of you. I want you to know that it sounds like you're going to be gone a lot, but when you come back, here is a key to the City of Gastonia, which I think is well-deserved for this great honor, and they've done a great job of picking you as, in this capacity. And to that, we're so happy for you.
Thank you very much.
And you be careful. Thank you very much.
May I say one thing?
Yes, I was going to ask you to, and then I want you to go by and shake most everyone's hand.
It truly is a huge honor, when you think about it, that there only have 43 President Generals and only three from North Carolina. Our last one was in 1989, and the first one was in 1952, so it doesn't come around very often. When Porter and I talked about this, we truly decided this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I probably need to take it. I have been to the United States Naval Academy representing the society, I leave Sunday for eight days in Washington again, then on to Arkansas, North Carolina, Ohio, Kentucky, back to Washington, that's just the next upcoming trips, but it truly is. But the one thing that he didn't introduce me as is I was the babysitter, one of the babysitters for, at the time, Councilman Bridgeman's daughters, Amy and Dana, back when he was on the council in the 70s, and I was a member of the Gastonia Youth Council when a high school student in Ashbrook, and babysitter to two precious little girls, Amy and Dana.
Thank you very much.
They were darling, too. And it is nice, I do have several of my chapter members are here to see this, too, so I thank them for that, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for this.
You will need to be safe.
Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, please walk by.
I've seen the drill once. Congratulations, Libby.
I'd like to also, Councilman Pierceall, is a plaque presentation to Ms. Jan Mahanna in recognition of her service on the Community Development Citizens Advisory Board. Jan?
Ms. Mahanna, you'll come forward. On behalf of the City of Gastonia and the Citizens Advisory Board, I would like to thank you for your excellent service as a Citizens Advisory Board member for over 20 years. You have been delightful to work with because of your sincere dedication to the citizens of Gastonia. What we love about you is your enthusiasm, unending energy to improve the quality of life of others. Due to your commitment, we have always considered you as our community development cheerleader. You have always been there for board meetings, public hearings, and special events. We wish you all the best in retirement and future endeavors, and we are very proud to have had you as a Citizens Advisory Board member. And on behalf of the city, we'd like to present you with this plaque that says Jan Mahanna, in appreciation for your service to the City of Gastonia as a Citizen Advisory Board member for over 20 years. Thank you so much.
Who knew back in 1972, when John helped me buy a home on North New Hope, I'd still be there? The house and I are a little bit worse for wear, but we're still hanging in there. I've been involved in so many wonderful things while I've lived here, from the early Human Relations Commission to going with Sam Wilkins and Phil Coyle to contact Keep America Beautiful to help start the Clean City Committee, many other things. And then I was blessed to become a part of the Citizens Advisory Board. In those halcyon days when we had lots of money, it was so exciting to help people improve their homes and people who never expected to be in homes, to have new homes, where we stood and cried while we did our reception for them. We have wonderful people working in community development, and they made the job very easy for all of us. And I thank you very much for the opportunity. I'll still be around, but not working quite as hard as I have been in the past. Thank you for this, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Jan, for all your many years of service.
Okay, item G is, is a public, excuse me, item L is Ms. Dotte Shear, who's also close by there, is Executive Director, Prevent Child Abuse in Gaston, reference children at some center. Got it?
That's a hard word to say sometimes.
Well, I'm having a lot more.
My mouth gets twisted up all around it.
I got water.
I have submitted a request from the city, and I have submitted a very similar request from the county, for funds to help us cover the cost of hiring a forensic interviewer for the CAC. Todd and Brenda have graciously put me on the agenda so that I can give you all a little bit of an education about what the Children's Advocacy Center is. And John, it took me a while before I could say that word without stumbling over it, believe me. And to give you some of the justification for this request, I'm going to ask you all, how many of you have ever been to the CAC? Well, you're about to get introduced to it tonight. Do you know what it is and what it's used for? Okay, well, you're about to find that out. On the handout that I gave you, that top page that has, I can't remember what order I put that in, the top page gives you some of the reasons for a CAC. Back in July, Prevent Child Abuse Gaston was chosen by the previous Board of Family Services to take over the Children's Advocacy Center of Gaston County. When they shut their doors, they wanted to save one agency, and that was the Children's Advocacy Center. The reason for that is because of what they do and the assistance that they provide for investigations of child physical and sexual abuse to the Gaston County, to the police departments, all 13 police departments in Gaston County, to DSS, to the hospital, to the District Attorney's Office. What we do there is critical to the prosecution of offenders that abuse children here in our county. When that happened, initially, Lincoln County CAC stepped in because they knew that it would take time for the transition to take place. We actually signed the transition letter on September 3rd. It was the 1st of December before I could actually get the doors opened. And that was because we had to go in, we had to inventory all of the equipment, all of the furniture that was left for us in the location that we're at now. We do not advertise the location of the CAC, it's kind of like the shelter, because when interviews are going on there, we do not want perpetrators, we do not want the accused, we do not want folks who have actually been charged to show up at the CAC at the same time. The offenders are not allowed on our premises at all. If they show up and we find out who they are, we have to call the police to come and pick them up. Our main concern is the safety of the children. Lincoln County has been recognized by the county and by the Gaston County Police as well for their role in helping us through this transition. I have a little PowerPoint for you all, and I'll show them very quickly how to do this, so bear with me while I go for this. He may have to come and show me. Okay, F, I forgot that.
You're good.
Okay.
Wait a minute. All right.
Now what do I do? Just quick on that?
Okay.
F5. All right, and then I just hit the spacebar?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I think we'll get to this. Since December 2014, actually, what I started was with the statistics. In January, the number of cases that we had come through the CAC was 20. Our referring sources were Gaston County DSS, the Gastonia Police Department, which referred 25% of those 20 cases, the Gaston County Police Department, and the Belmont Police Department. Our forensic interviewers, we have a list of forensic interviewers, folks here in the county who are trained to do forensic interviews. Forensic interview simply means that they are trained in the method of asking questions in these interviews to prepare for court, that meets the rules of evidence for court. I'm not going to get into that any further than that because it gets pretty complicated beyond that. But the people that are on that list who filled in in January were Emily Miller from the Lincoln County CAC, Brandy Miller from Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services, Sherry Reinhardt from the Lincoln County CAC, and Detective Michael Sumner from the Gaston County Police Department. Out of those cases, we referred 35% to counseling, we referred 10% for a child medical evaluation, and then cases with charges being sought were 30%. In February, we had nine cases. And again, you can, I'm not going to read them all again, but Gastonia Police Department referred 22% of those nine cases, and Detective Carla Mastrow actually performed 11% of the forensic interviews. She is trained in that. In March, we had 18 cases. Gastonia Police Department referred six of those, 6% of those cases. And this, again, is in your handouts that you have in front of you. In April, we had 14 cases. Gastonia Police Department referred 43% of the cases to the CAC. In May, we had seven cases. For some reason, it got slow for us. Gastonia Police Department referred 29% of those cases. And then in June, and these numbers are just through yesterday, we've already had seven cases. We have three more scheduled, I think, through the end of this week. We get new cases every day. Gastonia Police Department referred 28% of those cases. So this is a bar graph showing the trends of the cases right now. It looks like it's going down, it usually does. I have 22 years in Child Protective Services, and I can tell you right now that usually we get a lull in the summertime, and then it goes right back up again when the kids go back to school. But I was told by two police officers today that they have been slammed with new cases just within the last couple of days. So I don't know how many are actually going to come through the CAC yet. When you walk in the door, this is what you see. This is our family waiting room. When we moved into this building, we completely cleaned everything. We washed the walls, we scrubbed, we had the carpets cleaned, we had the one window, there's one window in that building, we had the window fixed, we've had the door fixed, it has been completely painted and renovated. It does, it looks somewhat like it did before, but in other ways, it looks a whole lot different. You walk into the, around the corner through that door you just saw, and you'll see the conference room. We have a display table in there, we take stuff off that table all the time. The display table is for the materials that Prevent Child Abuse Gaston has been developing over the last four years. This room right here is where a lot of the activity in the CAC takes place. This is the video equipment room. This is the room that has the actual video recording, audio recording equipment in it. And we actually have a camera that looks through a two-way mirror into the interview And this is the interview room. This is where the children are brought into, to sit down with a forensic interviewer for that critical forensic interview that hopefully will prevent the child from having to be interviewed over and over and over and over again by DSS, by the police, by counselors, by anybody else who feels like they have to have an interview, they can watch the interview that's been recorded at the CAC. The purpose of the CAC, again, is on the diagram that you have on your handout, and it talks about the flow of the cases that come in through law enforcement and that also come in through Child Protective Services. When a child comes in to... When a child comes into the CAC, they are greeted by Shaquilla Jones, who is my child advocate. Shaquilla is, she does a whole bunch of stuff. She takes care of the intake for our cases, she refers children on for further counseling, for the child medical examinations. She does a phenomenal job for me. We are just now working on a protocol with the hospital to make sure that whenever a child victim presents at the hospital who has been raped or who has been a victim of physical abuse, has an advocate with them from the beginning to the end, and that includes all the way through the court process. These two little girls standing right here are not child victims, they are my granddaughters, and I had them brought in just to use them as models. And this is an, see if I can get it to play. This will give you an idea, if I can get it to play, I don't know if it will or not, of an interview through that camera. I don't know if it'll do it or not. We did the videos earlier today, and I don't know if I can get it to do it or not. Anyway, this, I'm sorry it's turned sideways, I had my camera turned sideways, and then I realized it and I flipped it around. When we first started this, I said that I had to have, I don't know how to turn it on. Oh, wait a minute. Here it goes. Is it flipping around? Okay. This, it'll just show you, now Shaquilla and McKinley are just talking about school and about what she's doing for the summer, so this is not an actual interview. Shaquilla's not trained as a forensic interviewer. I wish she was because I think she would be fantastic. But a child advocate cannot fill the role of a forensic interviewer, and there's a whole list of reasons why they can't fill that role. And that is by the accreditation guidelines that comes from the National CAC. When we first started this, taking on the CAC, I said that we needed a total budget of $120,000 to get us through the first year. That's still true. So far, we have been able to raise just over $90,000, and that's been since the beginning of December. That figure includes $15,000 that I am supposed to receive from the Glenn Foundation beginning July 1. We are asking you for $15,000 for the next five years. Not $15,000 spread out over five years, I'm talking about $15,000 for the next five years to help us cover the cost of a forensic interviewer. And I think you could tell by the fact that we are having to call on so many different people to fill in whenever we need a forensic interviewer, that we really do need one that is dedicated to our CAC. We have also asked for $15,000 from the county for the same thing, to help cover the cost of a forensic interviewer. I'm looking for a forensic interviewer with a salary of about $35,000 to $37,000, so $15,000 will not cover even half of it. We have a grant in right now to the Governor's Crime Commission that will be a little bit over $143,000 for the next two years. That grant covers Shaquilla's salary, half of mine, and then operating costs and some training costs. It will not, by federal guidelines, will not cover the cost of a forensic interviewer. Shaquilla completed the national training in child advocacy in April in Huntsville, Alabama. I am going to the CAC management and the accreditation boot camp in Huntsville, Alabama in August, and yes, we are pursuing our credit, our national accreditation. We will have that back. We will have that back. We do have a part-time office manager who's working as a fundraiser and also as a volunteer coordinator, and we are looking to get both of our offices under one roof. I have, the PCAG office is at the YMCA Central, and the CAC, of course, is in its present location. I'm scrambling, going back and forth in between two places. So I've got to get us all under one roof. That's where I am. That's where we are. We're busy, we continue to be busy, and thank you very much for allowing me to give this presentation.
Okay, any questions, Dot?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Madam, number one, I think you're doing wonderful work here. I've seen from my career in law enforcement the value of a child advocacy center in many delicate investigations. Just to be clear, so what you would like from us is a commitment of $15,000 per year?
Yes.
For five years?
For five years.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one question. The Governor's Crime Commission grant?
Yes.
Okay. For $143,000?
Mm-hmm.
Has all of the paperwork, because I'm a little bit familiar with that process, has the paperwork been completed and sent in?
Yes.
And has been approved?
I do not have their approval yet. I have not heard back from them yet. They came out and did their site visit about three weeks ago. I have been told that it takes about six weeks from the site visit before you hear back. They had to do a site visit with us because we were a completely new entity. And from what I understand, the site visit went well, but I have not heard back from them. I did go to their training, their program development training last week, and it's quite a process.
I understand that.
But it's, everything has been turned in, everything is, I mean, as far as we can tell, we have everything in line, ready to go, and all of our finances are in line. Right now, we're, I went on Godstar not too long ago and updated our profile. We're at bronze level because I still have to upload a bunch of documents onto that, but we'll be at silver, silver level probably in about the next week or so.
But as far as the, the center goes itself?
Mm-hmm.
The forensic interviewers?
Yes.
Are, I mean, we're, the children are not being sent to other CACs because we cannot have the forensic interviewers there?
No, not now. They were going to Lincoln County?
Right.
Before we, and then Lincoln County still assists us, you know, by sending a forensic interviewer down, and we have formed a, a much more collaborative relationship with the CAC in Lincoln County and the one in Cleveland County. We've been doing courtesy interviews and allowing other counties to come in and use our CAC. They're not included in these numbers. When a family lives here and if an incident takes place in another county, or if, vice versa, you know, if they live in another county and then the incident takes place here, we all have to work together. And I think that's something that's been, it's a little bit different than the way it was being handled before.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. One, you mentioned a request to the city and the county. Have, have those already come in? Have you already made a formal request?
Yes, I've already made a formal request to the county, and I have not heard back from them yet.
And the city's received a formal request as well?
I sent it to you.
Oh, the email you sent me?
The email I sent you, yes.
Formal request?
Uh-huh.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I just didn't know if there was like a form she filled out or anything. Yes, I did get your email, that's for sure.
Okay.
And second?
If there's anything else I need to fill out, tell me, I'll have it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
As far as, I know you said that Gaston County is working very well with Lincoln County, and certainly based on what you've presented tonight, they've been a huge, huge help. What is the, the standard in the surrounding counties? You mentioned Cleveland, I'm sure Mecklenburg has one. What, what is the standard as far as funding organizations like the CAC? Where, where do other counties get that money?
Lincoln, I'm glad you asked that. Lincoln County, actually, Sherry Reinhardt from the Lincoln County CAC was the one that came to me and told me, she said, "Dot, you need to be talking to your county, you need to be talking to your municipalities, and you need to be talking to your schools." Because the other, Cleveland County and the town of Shelby, and Lincoln County and the town of Linkenton support their CACs. The CAC, the support that they get there is unbelievable compared to what we get here in Gaston County. And I'm not just talking about since we've taken it over, but from what they've gotten in the past. To my knowledge, the city and the county have never supported, financially supported the CAC in the past. So I'm coming because we do a lot of work for the city and the county, and we need this position. And I need it in a way that I know that I can continue to pay this person reliably for the next five years. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, if it would be appropriate at this time, I would like to make a motion to, number one, move forward with the $15,000 per year for five years. And additionally, maybe with some guidance from Mayor Pro Tem Craig, a resolution that would move forward in supporting the Governor's Crime Commission grant from this council toward our elected leaders up in Raleigh, that they would, you know, move favorably upon our request of the $143,000.
Did I, if I may, before I ask for a second?
Yes, sir.
Was the $15,000 for five years, or was it 15 a year for five?
It's 15 a year for five years.
Yes.
And that was your motion. Is there a second?
Yes, that is correct.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
This is probably more, sorry, this is probably more procedural than anything else because I, I, you know, feel strongly about this particular organization and the work that they do, but this is kind of all new to me, and I'm just wondering if I don't need a little bit more information before I can make a, a good decision. Because in some ways, it sets precedent, or can set precedent, where there are many nonprofits that are most deserving and need funds. And I want to see where this one fits in with all the others. I mean, we could have the Dream Center come next council meeting and make a presentation and have excellent reasons for, you know, their organization to be supported, but I want to get a handle on this, and I'm not sure just through this presentation right now, I've got a full, complete understanding of what these folks do and where these funds should be coming from. I mean, this is kind of the typical scenario that we hear, which is go to the county, go to the city of Gastonia, you know, because they're the, the big dogs, and, you know, again, we're all county citizens. So I, I'd like to table this and get a little bit more background on this, take it maybe to committee. I think it's, you know, again, it's a worthy cause, but I think I need a little bit more perspective as to where this fits into our big picture, where this fits into our budget. Because this is the first I've heard of a funding request. So, you know, and that's not to squash the, the concept or not support the issue, but I, I'm just a procedural kind of guy, and I, I like to know what's coming before it hits me, so.
Is there a second to the?
Question?
Yes.
Before we do that. Mr. Mudd, this is, would look like, it'd be more like social services, a social services type program. Are we doing any other programs like this?
We haven't funded this kind of a program before. It typically is funded by the county. The only ones that will get involved with are with the community development block grant program that pertain to housing, or there's some sort of a project, you know, a neighborhood development project or some things like that. But for the most part, the projects that we're talking about here, traditionally, it's United Way and also, and cobbling together grants and county government, because county government does that sort of business typically.
Right. I like, Mr. Carlin, Dr. Carlin, have concerns about this spending, committing $75,000. I have a lot of respect for Dot Scher, and I really do, but it's the, one time somebody told me, "Don't let the camel get its head on the tent." Next thing you know, is another group's going to come here, and I don't feel comfortable getting into the social services advocacy of this. A county does that, that's what the county does. I served on the social services board for 10 years, so. And we can do this, but I just wonder if it's going to be opening the barn door for, as Dr. Carlin says, and that really concerns me. Because I don't want to continue spending more and more money, and we have to take it out of the fund balance too, wouldn't we?
Yes.
For this year, so we, we're going to talk about things like this unless it's really a dire emergency. We ought to be doing that during the budget process, not coming after the budget's been approved.
We're still on discussion with Craig, you had your hand, and then Mr. Pearson.
Dot, thank you for that presentation. I, I, I think it was very enlightening, but here again, I, I guess I'm more concerned about the $143,000 from the Governor's Crime Commission, and I could support Dr. Carlin's motion of tabling it until we get some more information as to when, when you think you're going to find out something about that, because that's a lot of money. And it, it seems as though, yeah, we do need to find out where it's coming from, okay, where the money's going to come from. I know that at one point in time, there was some conversation about maybe some of the funding, and this is when I was on the board of Family Services, is maybe some, there's some money from forfeiture money, and it would not have to come out of the general fund. But if that be the case, there's, needs to be some more conversation and some talk about that. So I would second that motion to table it until we can get some additional information and also find out a little bit more about the Governor's Crime Commission.
There was only a motion on the floor?
We make a, we?
There was a motion on the floor, so a motion to, to table would be a motion to amend, so. So you vote on that motion first and see if it, if it carries.
Now, there was still discussion on that, the one we were talking about. I'm going to do that.
Yes, sir.
Pearson, then we'll vote on the table motion.
I, I have no problem tabling the motion so that we can identify, you know, A, where the funding would come from, that sort of thing, but the, the distinction I want to make, because when Ms. Shear first brought this to my attention, I, like a couple of you, said, "Well, you know, we can't fund every nonprofit, and there's so many nonprofits in the city." There's this distinct difference here, though.
Absolutely.
As a municipality, we do not go to those other nonprofits and request their services. If we do not have this position in Gastonia, our police department is going to have to drive children up to Lincoln County. They've already been traumatized.
Yes.
What, what further more damage do we want to do to them? So we, as a city, as a municipality, are going to this nonprofit and saying, "We need you to have this certified position, we want you to pay them, we want to use your service, but we don't give to nonprofits." And, and to me, that's almost offensive that we would say that. So if we're going to use this service, if our police department's going to use this service, I think we need to at least assist in funding. And, and like I said, I can support the motion to table it so we can identify the different factors of where the money's going to come from, what budget item, that kind of stuff, but, but I don't want to get into a, a whole discussion of this is like other nonprofits. A lot of what they do may be, but we're talking about funding a position that specifically is a service to our municipality, so that's my comment.
Whoever had the hand up first.
Dave?
Todd, you make a good point. What I, what I would suggest, again, and this, if you were properly advised, then this would have been an agenda item. It would have been, you know, your documentation would have been in this agenda, it would have had a funding request attached to it, it would have had staff input, okay? And then this would all been fleshed out, and then we could have acted on this. But this is a presentation. This is a presentation. This is not, this is not an appropriate place to ask for funding.
And that's why I said I can support your table, because she did ask.
So let's just do it right, let's bring it back and do it right.
Campbell, then what?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I just want to be clear to the, to the council.
I just want to be clear to the, to Councilman McAtier's comment. If I understand correctly, it's $15,000 per year for five years.
That's correct.
So, in essence, all we would be funding out of your indicated fund balance would be $15,000 for this fiscal year. And in fact, if this was funded in the affirmative, then frankly, the other four years would be within the fiscal years to come, the four fiscal budgets to come of $15,000. And we've seen a lot of other groups that have come forth, and we've funded them on a number of different levels. And frankly, I would say again, I've seen the work, not particularly of this one, but in other areas. And I think it's something that is absolutely needed. I think the, Todd, you brought it to fruition very well. You have to lower the trauma level of the child as best you can. They've many times been traumatized by someone that they love or someone that they look up to. And I don't feel that, you know, Dave, I understand your procedural issue, I totally do. But what I don't want to do is kind of wrap procedure. I want to make sure that if we're going to go in that direction, that it's fast-tracked because two things I don't want to happen. Number one, us tabling this have a negative effect on the grant application.
It won't.
Or number two.
It won't have a negative effect, because what we've already submitted has already been what they require.
Number two, to ensure that the level of service that we have for the children is maintained during our deliberation process.
Would it be appropriate if we're tabling it, help me out on procedure here, Ash, if we're tabling it, do we need a date when this will be brought back?
You don't have to specify that, but you can.
I would be a whole lot happier if we had a date.
As would I.
Just by tabling it, it could be tabled for the next 10 years.
That's my concern. Is 45 days appropriate?
No, I think, you know, second meeting in July, 30 days approximately.
Okay.
Should be fine.
I would amend my motion for 30 days. That seems allowable to me.
Actually, are we actually voting on the amended?
Voting on the table.
The amended motion, so I'm actually just.
You make, you're, are you saying 45 days?
I know, I'm saying 30 days.
You mean 30 days.
The second, yeah, the second meeting.
Our council meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Our council in July. And who seconded that?
Brandon. Yeah, I seconded. Dr. Carlin said that.
All in favor of tabling for 30 days and come back with more answers from?
Veronica, can I just ask one more question before we vote? How does this 30 days put you in any peril, Madam, or your program?
We are in the process right now of looking for a forensic interviewer. It just affects on how long I can pay her.
What do you feel about the 30 days?
Up to 30 day, I can, we can handle up to 30 days.
Okay.
I will, if you'll allow me to do this, come by the CAC. Come by there, see what we do. Shaquilla can show you, you know, what she does. We can show you what we do. I say as if it's two different things. It's not. It's all under Prevent Child Abuse Gaston. But you are welcome to come over there, take a look at it, walk through there, see what actually happens. You know, you just have to call me ahead of time, because I can't have somebody else coming in there whenever we have interview because of confidentiality.
Thank you. So, I have your honor.
Okay.
Technically, that would be the 21st of July, which is our city council.
Okay. All right. Okay, all in favor of tabling till the 21st of July, if you have a chance, okay? I think the only, and I have a purpose weight, the difference, this is just me.
Okay.
I can't speak for the council. The difference, as I'm looking down at the word, we can't pronounce too well, you know, the first word is the word. As opposed to other nonprofits, and there are a lot of them, and we've worked and supported, all of us, everybody in this room, I'm sure, has worked and supported so many, but children, child abuse, or the child abuse, I think that, to me, is number one.
Absolutely, sir.
That's number one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 21st.
On the 21st. I'll drive down from Blowing Rock. I'll be on vacation, but I'll come back for your city council meeting.
We'll come up there.
I would love for you to, hon. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item is, and that was a very good presentation, too. Item G is a public expression. Public expression is a time for any speaker to express whatever viewpoint that they so choose. Each speaker should list their name and address for the record, and each person has five minutes to speak. Counsel does not respond. Our dialogue with speakers during the public expression portion of the meeting, but you may be asked to provide your contact information to a staff member after you speak so that your concern can be addressed. This has been this way, I guess, for 100 years, long for us. And certainly, at this time, I have the list of the sign-up sheet on just the regular public expression, and done on that one there. And I'm going to certainly start with the way that they were, they're signed in here. And this would have to be the first one I'd have to ask on. It can either be one of two things. Is it Casson or Casey Reynolds? What?
Casson.
Casson. Okay. That's not, it could be either. Casey. 200, go ahead and give your address, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm Casson Reynolds, 200 East Long Avenue. Good evening. I'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm a detective with the Gastonia Police Department and have been with the department since 2008. I've been given a lot of opportunities and have been able to advance my knowledge, training, experience, and expertise. I've made friends in every department in the city and with hundreds of citizens. However, I fear that the Gastonia Police Department is not providing the public with an adequate level of safety due to the rate at which officers and detectives are leaving the department. The public is not safe. This 174 sworn law enforcement department is the largest in the county and has prided itself on being ahead of the other agencies in special situations, regional assistance, investigations, experts in trafficking crime scene, drug interdiction, and several other aspects. However, the morale around the department is so low that officers are leaving or trying to leave at an alarming rate. Officers are leaving for law enforcement jobs with other agencies or going into the private sector. Of that 174 sworn law enforcement officers we currently only have, approximately 154 actually employed. Of those 154, we have six in training, seven on light duty, which puts us to about 141. Five others are in final interviews with other careers, and dozens more looking for employment elsewhere. This equates to potentially only having 135 sworn officers in the next few weeks. That's from chief to officer. We are 23% short of being adequately staffed to protect and serve the citizens of Gastonia. The Gastonia Police Department established a step plan in 2005 that would have an officer reach top pay at their ninth year. However, that step plan has not been funded since 2006. Since then, the officers have only received citywide cost of living adjustments, raises that increase bottom and top pay alike. Therefore, the city has a large amount of compression with officers having very little experience and officers having a decade of experience making similar pay. For several years and possibly to this day, officers are still being hired under the premise that the Gastonia Police Department has a step plan. A new officer with a bachelor's degree is told that they'll start in the high 30s and be in the mid 50s in nine years. However, this has never happened. Officers are being hired under a false premise. An officer in 2007 is being given the same pay as someone hired tomorrow. That officer hired in 2007 can go to the county police, to the Charlotte Mecklenburg, to state agencies, or other local police departments, and receive a $10,000 to $15,000 raise upon starting. The Gaston County Police Department, a smaller agency than the Gastonia Police Department, has an average officer salary that is $12,000 more than the Gastonia Police Department. As the step plan has not been funded, the city insurance has provided less coverage and costs families more money. According to the United States Department of Labor, the Consumer Price Index, or Cost of Living, has increased 14% since 2007. The city of Gastonia has increased overall pay approximately 7% since 2007. That includes the July 1st of this year's raise. Therefore, that raise that the city claims they are providing are only half of the inflation rate. An officer hired eight years ago essentially makes less money today than when they started. As the number of officers on the streets decrease, the violent crime in the city increases. The violent crime for this year is up 28% for the year. The public is not safe. Does the city not value the safety of the citizens to adequately provide the police protection? Has the city determined that police work isn't dangerous, demanding, and requiring of intense training, and therefore doesn't need to pay the police a competitive salary? Excuse me, a competitive salary? Not paying the police for their abilities and dedication is putting the citizens of Gastonia in danger. The Gastonia Police Department spends a great deal of money on training the officer in the four-month police academy, then four months in field training, before allowing them onto the street to patrol on their own. In salary alone, a new fully trained officer costs the city $26,000 in just eight months. Once out of initial training, the officer can go on to specialize in several different areas, and the department pays for this training while that officer is away from the city. This is a large investment, an investment that the cities, citizens of Gastonia are making. As an employee of this city, I feel that we owe it to the civilians to make the Gastonia Police Department a better place to work that fairly compensates its officers for their abilities. Since the city is not adequately paying their police officers, the cities, the citizens of this city are in danger. Citizens are not being provided with a level of public safety consistent with the size of this city because of the lack of officers actually employed and able to work. I ask that the city.
If I'm going to have to interrupt you with this light, that's five minutes, if you may be, next speaker may could take over for you there, possibly, if you just ruled that we certainly, I believe.
Yes, sir. I have about 30 seconds if anyone else would like to read.
All right. It's Brandon McConnell, Cashin Road.
I'm just going to do my own, because, yes. My name is Brandon McConnell. I live at 6517 Cashin Road, Huntersville, North Carolina. I was a police officer in the city of Gastonia for four years, two months, and 18 days. I want to start off by saying that I do not represent the police department. I do not represent anybody that works for the police department currently. As Detective Reynolds indicated, you have a manpower crisis going on in your department that even the supervisors and those in charge are not aware of. I took a position with a company in the private sector and started recruiting people who have investigative experience, and the number of people who have reached out to me that want to leave your police department would blow your mind. I've had sergeants reach out to me, and I've had one captain reach out to me talking about wanting to leave the police department. They're leaving for more money and better benefits in the private sector. But the most egregious reason that they're leaving is because every new recruit that comes into the police department, when they're deciding where they want to work, has shown this document. It's the step plan that he alluded to. It says that if you are a officer with a high school degree, you will get 4% a year. Two-year degree, 4% a year. Three-year, or four-year degree, 5% a year. The raise they just got is a fraction of one of those raises that they're supposed to get on a consistent basis every year for nine years until they top out. These deceptive hiring practices, I believe, pose a certain civil liability for this city, and I am currently looking for an attorney to entertain a class action lawsuit against this city because of what it's doing to its police department. So, what's the result of all these officers leaving? Well, the police officers that are still there are experiencing one result. They're experiencing mandatory overtime, 12-hour shifts with no breaks, and working for an employer who rarely meets its minimum staffing requirements as set forth by department policy. The result a drug dealer or a gang member are experiencing is the fact that the Street Crimes Unit is no longer on the street, so they are free to do pretty much whatever they want because there's no time for proactive policing, because they've got a lot of calls for service to get to. The result for an average citizen of Gastonia is that when they dial 911, they are waiting longer and longer for response from police officers. The result that I hope nobody has to experience is the fact that fewer officers equals more uses of force. If you send one officer to arrest me, and I feel like not going to jail that day, there is a higher likelihood that I'm going to be hurt, that officer is going to be hurt, or both in the process. If you send two officers, that goes down exponentially. Let's look a little further down the road. When I went through the police academy at Central Piedmont Community College, we started with a class of 43 and graduated 12. That exact same program just started with 10 and graduated 2. What could that mean for the future of law enforcement? What it should say to you is that you need to do what it takes to retain the police you currently have. It's not a complex problem, and you already have the playbook. If you fund this plan as it's written and as it's being shown to your employees, you would be beating lateral transfers away with a stick. This is the place to work if you're a cop. This is the type of town where all the stuff that everybody that gets into law enforcement wants to do, this is where it happens. People are also looking at the national attitude towards law enforcement, and they're saying simply, "I don't want to do that. I'm not signing up." An Ed Munn solution of just hiring more officers is not a solution at all. You do not replace a veteran officer with a rookie officer. There are officers in the back of this room that I do not recognize, and I left just over a year ago. A lot of officers that I don't recognize. And I can tell you the ones that know what they're doing, and I can tell you the ones that don't know what they're doing. But you don't get to pick who comes to your house when you dial 911, and you're not going to know who they are. It takes time to train them up, and you need to hold on to the ones that you have. This town is one incident away from the next national story on the level of Ferguson or Baltimore. And I would not want to be the ones in charge when it happens, because ignorance to the problem is no longer an option for y'all.
Mr. Travis Kissler, 138 Roxy Lane. Is that Gastonia?
No, sir. It's 138 Roxy Lane in Belmont, North Carolina.
Belmont, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's close.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. Like Brandon McConnell, I used to be a police officer here in the city of Gastonia. I've lived here my entire life up until about three years ago. And I want to speak directly to not only you gentlemen and ladies, but also to the citizens that may be watching this and everyone in this room right here. The reason I'm here tonight is because every one of these police officers in this room here tonight are still my brothers and sisters. I would take a bullet for every single one of them sitting in this room right here, right now. I may not still be a police officer, but they're still my family. This is my hometown. No matter whether or not I still live here or not, I still do business here. I live in this county, and it affects me. It affects you watching at home. It affects every citizen of this city. This is the right thing to do. I can't ignore an injustice when I see one, and I'm not going to any longer. Like Brandon McConnell, I recently left law enforcement. I was, I served in the city as a police officer for just under six years. I took a job with the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department earlier this year, where I served for just a short time before taking a better opportunity in the private sector. I can tell you this for a fact. When you go to another police department in this state, the largest one in the state right across the river, I assure you, they know about Gastonia. It is renowned in the law enforcement community for the issues this community faces. This town is not Mayberry. This town has serious, serious issues, and they didn't start yesterday. The reason I'm here tonight is because of a mindset change. What we've got to reverse is decades of wrong priorities and a way of thinking. This doesn't begin or end with the step plan. That's the first solution. But we all know that's not where it begins and ends. When we're being told over and over that the money is not there, where's the money going? What are our priorities as a city? As a council, as a city manager, as a mayor, I ask you, where do your priorities lie? On Main Street Project? On Main Street projects, bookended by a homeless shelter, a strip club, and a liquor store right in the middle, with public money going to real estate projects, endless funding for a civic center that is not rarely being used? I can't tell you how frustrating this is. I don't work here anymore, but these people are still my family. My parents still live in this city. Half my family still lives in this city. I talk to these people regularly, these officers that are here tonight. I don't speak for them. I'm not here on their behalf. I'm here because I support them, and I am concerned about them. This city's not Mayberry. You can't hold police officers to a higher standard while maintaining substandard pay. The short time I was across the river at the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, as I said, they were very familiar with Gastonia. And any police officer in this room who has been here for more than five minutes and policed in this city, if they were to go to the Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department or the Highway Patrol, they would get instant, immediate respect because of where they come from. It's that significant. I ask you, and I beg you, to be honest with the citizens of this city about what your priorities are. Let's reexamine our priorities. You can't hold police officers to a higher standard and maintain substandard pay. It's hypocrisy. It's bad policy, but too often lately, in the last several decades, it seems to be the Gastonia way. There's no argument against this that makes any sense to me. It's a trend that can't keep continuing. I would encourage each one of you, within the next year, do at least one ride-along in this city with a police officer one time in the next quarter, once each quarter for the next year. I beg you to get out into the community and see what really goes on in this city. The police department is the fundamental first priority of any government anywhere, and if we don't recognize that, no one here is in a, should be in a position of leadership, certainly not in a city with one of the highest crime rates in the state.
Okay, that's the, that's the three that have signed up for public expression under this, under any non-item on the list. Mr. Russell and Mr., hold on, I didn't mean to, Ms. Russell and Mr. Morasso, you both have signed for item seven. Would you care to speak now, under the public expression, or would you care to wait till we get to item seven? We'll assume.
Good evening.
Counselor?
We just moved to item seven.
Okay.
Here, really, to answer questions.
Okay, it's not, it's, according to this record, that's what we have. Thank you, sir. Any comments, Mr. Munn, before we go on?
Mr. Mayor, the issues that brought up here are extremely important, important to all of us that are up here and all of you that are sitting down there. I live in this city. We all live in this city. The neighborhoods that we live in, neighborhoods that our families live in, and the commercial neighborhoods that we visit every day, making sure that they're safe is top priority. We have so much respect for this police department and for all of you individually. We wish we had more money. We were able to push through an increase, but not as much as we would like. We will be working on it, working on it with your command staff now, and we will be trying to come forward with some recommendations to the city council that look at your career paths, look at your pay, and also look at some of the other issues that have been raised in your department. Police department is critical for our city to make progress, and we respect the work you do, and we will work diligently to look at all of those issues that were raised and report those to city council. And once we report them to city council, we would like the council to evaluate it and see if we've missed some things and make sure that we address something now. Now, there are some issues that will take longer time, and there are some issues that maybe we can bite off and address right away. But we are listening to you, and we're taking it seriously, and we're ready to move forward.
I got my-
Travis Kissler was an officer at our community watch. I got to know him a little bit and have a lot of respect for him. So thank you for your comments. I really appreciate that. The other gentleman that was saying he's trying to recruit our guys, please don't let him recruit you away from here. Try, I hope that the manager and the chief and others will take all these considerations, these concerns, to task, to find some solutions, and try to help our police department morale go up. I don't want it to be down. I think every time I see a police officer out and around, I try to speak to him and tell him how much I appreciate what you do. And I didn't know until just recently that there was so much concern with the police department, that there was, that everybody was down so much. And I'm glad you've come to us and let us know. I wish more of you said something to me. But of course, you were going into command. You didn't want to go, you know, away from the proper military command structure. But I really want to see something happen to, to make all of you men and women appreciate being police officers in the city of Gastonia. And we have other departments that might need to look at the marketplace and what other people are paying police officers and maybe get our salary adjusted or something down the road. And I'm willing to look at whatever solutions we can have, and I appreciate your concern in coming here. Thank you.
Yes, sir. General?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of comments, make them brief. Number one, several of the comments that were made this evening, one really, I think, drives home for me. It's not going to be fixed overnight. It's not going to be fixed with just a step raise. We need to come together with a roadmap for career tracking, for growth, for specialization, and to continue the partnership that we have with our community. It's not going to happen overnight, and it's not going to happen if we're on opposite sides of the room. We have to come together to that middle ground. We have to take the gloves off. We need to be candid, and we need to work within our ambit of cooperation to get the job done. I know that you're doing that out on the street, but we also need to do that when it comes to how we're going to fix this. And I stand with all of you in trying to work forward on this. I think that we can, and I think that there's an end to the roadmap, but it's got, the journey has got to start today. It's got to start tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being here, and I think everything, we heard what everyone said. As Mr. Munn said, all of us live here. All of us raised a family here. Some of us never left here, never, I mean, never been, never been anywhere but here. A few of us. And we, I know I can speak for all of us, that we, we are proud of the police department. I've been connected with them off and on since the '70s, and you have too. But, and a lot of wonderful people have, that we've known that have been their force. And I'm like you. I want to speak to them, too. They, they're, they're special because, more special than us that certainly don't have to, to do the job that they do. But they also are to, they do hold their heads up high, and that's very important. I heard an officer last night said, the officer said this was her home, and this was her family. So that, that makes you feel good, too. And Ed, I certainly, you heard, and certainly you've got this, your group that you want to come back to us and let us know exactly what, in comparison, et cetera, et cetera. I've always been big on comparison. They, there's lots of reasons that people would leave, as was mentioned earlier. There's a lot of people that retire at a certain age, but that's in every business I know. But here again, we want to make that as, as little as possible. Thank y'all. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I know you, you came out in some hot weather and didn't have to be here, but we're glad for what, however you feel that, on this subject, that you are here with us. Yes, ma'am.
Just in following up to what you had to say, Mr. Mayor, what I would like to say is that we can sit up here and we can talk about what we've all talked about. It didn't happen overnight. We need to do this. We need to do that. And, and I would expect and hope that there's actions behind this talk. There doesn't need to be an ongoing talking, because actions are going to speak louder than words. And hopefully, we can show our police department that, that we will take action, we will do some positive things, and we will hold everyone accountable for what needs to be done and done right. So that's just what I had to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
With regard to your comment, Mayor Protam, I would say very clearly, I've had five meetings with Mr. Munn already. I have pages of what I consider to be a theoretical study on this matter. It's not unique to the Gastonia Police Department. It's going on around the country. But how we're going to be measured is how we deal with it, not how, what happened in the past. So I would, again, Ed, if I can help any way in my experience, we've had a number of meetings, one lasted well over an hour, and hopefully, we can get some input from all you as well. Thank you.
Send agenda, items one through five. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Y'all drive safely going home. Thank you. Okay. You want to take a break? Okay. I think when, when we do start back, if it's, if it's agreeable with the council, we'll go to item seven and then back to item six. Staff doesn't like me for that, but, no, seriously, we're here anyway.
Did you say you're going to move item seven up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Is that okay?
Mr. Thompson, we're going to move item seven up.
Just one. We're going to have item seven, then come back to items, two lower, item six, if that's all right.
Okay, that's the way.
We'll just go ahead, and I'll be back in a moment. I'll read it out. Item seven, this is a presentation by City Attorney Smith, the Web Theater Redevelopment Agreement, Rehab Craft LLC Resolution, Authorizing Sale of Property Utilizing Upset Bid Process. And I do have two to speak on this, but you go right ahead with your presentation, counsel.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In keeping with counsel's motion, on May 5th, we have negotiated a proposed redevelopment agreement with now the LLC that's been set up, it's Rehab Craft, which is a venture owned by Mr. Mack and Mr. Morasso, who also operate Epic Chop House. And the proposal would be to advertise for upset bid at a price of $375,000, and the conditions contained in the agenda, which include spending at least $300,000 in repairs and upgrades and changes to the building, and there are some specific items of equipment and plans that are specified in Exhibit B to the redevelopment agreement that are in your agenda. If counsel approves this, the upset bid would be advertised probably on Saturday. There would be a 10-day upset period, and then the final high bidder will come back to the council for approval, and the agreements executed at that time. There's a timeline set forth for closing. There's a timeline set forth for construction. And Mr. Russell and Mr. Morasso are here to answer any questions you may have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions as to the documents.
Anyone on the council, I'm going to call Mr. Russell up if you, oh, we can wait until, okay, which is on the sign-up sheet, Attorney John Russell. Mr. Morasso's next, if you want to stand together, you're welcome to. You represent, your firm represents Mr. Morasso.
That's correct. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Again, John Russell with Mullen, Holland, and Cooper. On behalf of Mr. Morasso, Rick Mack is the other partner. He's had an issue come up with his back, so he's seeking medical attention and can't be with us tonight. John Spencer from the, is the executive chef, and he's here with us. The only thing I'd want to say, I just want to thank the city attorney's office and city staff for working with us. They've been pretty specific in asking us to provide a detailed description of some of the equipment, some of the rehabilitation that will go on in the space. We've tried to do that. We've tried to be, to be responsive, and they've been real good to work with, and we do appreciate that. If you have any questions, Mr. Morasso is here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to address those, certainly as to what his vision is for the restaurant, and then any questions on the documents, I'd be happy to take those as well, and Mr. Smith said he would as well. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Kimball and Dr. Curly?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Just to address who, which one you wanted for.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, I believe maybe you could answer this, if not, our legal counsel. Comparing the two documents, the one that was previously submitted on May 5th and the contract we have now, specifically, there was an issue of mold remediation that was brought up in the initial contract. I do not see that in the contract that is before us now. Hence, my question, do we have any mold? Was it remediated? Where are we with that?
The redevelopment contract includes a number of inspections that would have to take place prior to closing, so I don't believe there's been, that issue has been specifically addressed by anybody looking for it, but that's going to be one of the things that I think would be part of the inspection process prior to closing.
And Councilman Kimball, during the negotiation of the contract, specifically the, the conditions that are on Exhibit 7-14, Assistant City Manager Bombadil took issue with the word mold. He said, "We don't really have any tests back from any, you know, scientific, you know, source saying that it's mold. It's just, it's black floor. It needs to be repaired. Let's take that word out." And so the replacement of the grease trap and the construction of grease trap, you know, access through there so that doesn't happen again is kind of what Assistant City Manager Bombadil was intending. We'll solve that problem, whatever it specifically was. We did use the word mold in the motion that was made at the May 5th council meeting, but we did wind up taking that out during the negotiations.
Thank you, sir. Secondarily, sir, and again, maybe this is for you, Ed, why is it common practice for the city to provide the actual grease trap? I believe it's going to be the Shear GB 250 or the equivalent. That was something that was, it did not appear to me, reading the initial document, that the city was going to provide that. And apparently, now that we are, and I believe it's going to be your company or companies that are going to be installing that item at your cost.
This was a part of the negotiation, I think, and the grease trap, it's very much in our best interest to get that matter resolved, because part of the problems that we've been having is we've had some blockages south street, a little further down, and that comes from an undersized facility that we have here. Now, we just happen to have in, already, some of the equipment that's there that the city has. So what we were doing is we can provide them that equipment if they would install it. There's going to be a good bit of work. Most of the work is the labor and the installation, the actual- Most of the work is the labor and the installation, the actual equipment itself is not as, it is, that is not the biggest issue. It is actually dealing with the expansion of it and also the red, the, the better access that's planned for that, which, which is part of the renovation.
I'm not, you know, I'm not really in the restaurant business, Ed. Is that something that breaks down after a few years, or was not the right one then? This was a city development several years ago. How did, what happened there?
It, it was put in, but it was small. And you, if it's very small, you have to pump it out all the time, and they weren't. You know, what happened was we saw that it was spilling over. So, what you have to do is you have to have these things sized, and if you're a fairly large restaurant, you need to have those things sized so that they can hold the grease. And then, on a reasonable basis, you, you bring a truck in and you, and you remove it, and you keep it clean, and you, and you, but, but it, you know, the, you got to make sure that it's properly sized and properly maintained. All restaurants.
To that end, what was, did, who put that in, or do we have an action against the previous lessy for putting in the wrong one, or, because it seems like we're literally cleaning up a mess of several years ago now.
Yeah, that, that was back.
Yeah, Mr. Nick put it in. So, he put it in.
It's not necessarily the wrong one. Should a larger one have been put in? Yes, for adequate operation of the restaurant. As Mr. Munn said, a smaller one will suffice, but you do have to pump it out more, and obviously, the harder it's working, the more you're pumping it, and the more wear and tear. So, would it have been advisable to use a bigger one? Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
But it wasn't necessarily incorrect.
Thank you. Last question I have, this may be for our legal counsel, maybe for your counsel. When we talk about concepts, dining concepts, and I understand there are marked diversions between the two concepts, the one that you're putting forth and another one that we had heard of. Ash, where do we stand with the enforceability of a particular concept if, in fact, anyone would, at the end of a period, say, "Hey, my concept isn't working, we voted on a particular concept, but for one or a number of reasons, that concept may be, may be abandoned"? What's your perspective?
Well, I think, as we've discussed before, the, the course of action for the city would be to file to enforce the redevelopment agreement and try to get a judge to agree that the concept incorporated or envisioned in the redevelopment agreement is not being followed, and to somehow order someone to do that. In tandem with that, we will have a mortgage on the building, and if they stop paying the mortgage, then we can foreclose on the mortgage. In the unusual situation that they're making their mortgage payments but abandoning the concept and changing it, becomes a little bit more tricky and a little bit more problematic, and, you know, that would be up to the judge that that particular instance came before.
Gotcha. That's all I have. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
John, if you want to offer any perspective on that, we'd be glad to hear it.
I think part of, the only thing I would say is that part of the way you do that is that you ask the developer, in this case Rehab Craft, to tell you what's the equipment that's going in there, and what specific changes they're going to make. And they've done that in Exhibit B, and so, while there may not be a specific language that describes the use or the concept, you get that through the exhibits to your contract, and that's what city staff has asked us to do, and that's what the developer has responded. If I understand the question correctly.
Got it. Thank you very much. That pretty much answers it. Thank you.
Questions?
Sir?
Yes. Go ahead, Doc.
Yep.
Oh, you were pointing, okay.
I'm not sure to which attorney I need to address this question, however, again, part of Exhibit B, in paragraph six, the final line states, "Approval for renovations to the storefront windows, entry doors, or addition of an awning and blade sign shall not be unreasonably withheld." Could somebody explain, "shall not be unreasonably withheld"?
What paragraph are you looking at?
This is number six, the last line.
Yeah.
Give me, give me a little background on that.
You know, if they propose an awning or a blade sign that we say we don't like, you know, what is reasonable or not reasonable will be in the eye of the holder, and that will be one of the tricky things to, to come to an agreement on. Now, we do have a picture somewhere of a similar awning, and so, what we would hang our hat on is if what is eventually installed is not similar to the picture that Mr. Morasso showed us earlier, you know, that's the route we'd have to take. But it's, you know, it's a tricky, that's a tricky one to enforce.
Okay. And, and I guess with regard to staff?
And, and also, because you're in the downtown design district area, that we will meet to review your design anyway and have to approve it. So, there's actually a regulatory function that actually will govern it, and so, should they do something that might not, not proper?
But Councilman Curly, the Exhibit 7-16 photo of that awning, that is not the web theater, that's a different, you know, location, and that is specifically the awning that Mr. Morasso brought to us and discussed.
Yeah. And I was going to mention that, Ed, the, the design standards, I think, that we had created and approved several years ago for the downtown, need to be at least reviewed and, and respected, or at least if there's going to be a variance to that, we need to hear about it on the front end.
Yeah. That, that applies to the property.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Either gentleman? Jim, Mr. Morasso, you got anything? You're signed up.
I've got, I'm just amazed that after four months, we, we are getting closer and closer to this, and it's been a great journey so far. I'm looking forward to the end result of opening up a business in Gastonia and serving some outstanding fare to, to the town, to the city. I'm very, very grateful, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you both. Ash, anything else?
Well, it's, it's before council for a motion. What are your wishes?
Yes, sir.
If you'd like, I'll move it to support the epic shop there.
The motion would be to approve the redevelopment agreement and declare the property surplus and then advertise it for the upset bid.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's what you said. Okay, so, second to the motion. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Opposed? One opposed, Mr. Kimball. Okay. Thank you very, very much.
That was not a correct motion. It would be Rehab Craft, not Epic Chop House. That's what I was trying to say. That there is no Epic Chop House motion.
Jason, ready to go here?
Mr. Mayor, while, while he comes forward, I just want to put out there that the, the motion referenced Epic Chop House, but they've set up another LLC Rehab Craft, and so, that is actually who the documents were drafted for, and that is who will be advertised. If I could just get a confirmation of that, again, from the six, the six who voted.
Okay. Everyone's, yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. Got it. Thank you. Public hearing, item six is in your Exhibit Six, also is a Lorre Village Area Plan. Subject hearing involves considering the adoption of the Lorre Village Area Plan. The Lorre Village Area Plan Study Boundary is approximately the area bounded by and including West Airline Avenue to the north, West Garrison Boulevard, Boulevard to the south, South Clay Street and South Marsh Street to the east, and Gaston Avenue and Lindwood Road to the west. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the Lorre Village Area Plan with comments as provided in the attached exhibit presentation is Mr. Jason Thompson, the planning director.
Thank you.
I believe one of your members is back there, too.
That's correct.
He weighed.
Planning Commissioner Alec Long is present, if you have any questions for him. As you're all aware, the city staff has been in the process in recent months of trying to finalize the draft of the Lorre Village Area Plan. I've prepared a brief PowerPoint slideshow just to kind of walk you through that planning process. I'll go ahead and apologize and ask for your patience with my voice, it hasn't been entirely cooperating with me today, so you may hear a few coughs here and there. So, as everyone's aware, the, the idea for the Lorre Village Area Plan was in, you know, looking, you know, into the future when, when the process started, and envisioning the completion of the redevelopment of the Lorre Mill itself. As that took place, and I'll call your attention to the, the slideshow I put together here, as that began back in 2013, a group of about 30 staff members from all the different departments and divisions across the, the city met a couple of different times to begin some, you know, brainstorming sessions and, and looking at basically, you know, a focused or comprehensive assessment of, of the conditions in the, in the plan area, and looking at what some of the opportunities and challenges were. And so, as you see on this slide here, you, you see how the, the discussion revolved a lot around what were some of the partnerships and alliances that could be, you know, depended upon moving through the process, what, what exactly is, is, is the city's role throughout that process, and then what are some resources and opportunities that you can look for. Following that, staff set up the kickoff public workshop for the plan. That was held at a church out in the, out in the Lorre Village, very well attended, approximately about 150 people attended that kickoff public workshop. It was done in sort of an informal fashion, and there were a number of city staff members and other folks, also from, from the Lorre Mill Development Team were present there to talk and, and answer questions, but, but more importantly, what we were doing, as you can see on this slide here, what we were doing is we, we wanted to get comments back, not so much us talking to the folks who came out and participated, but for them to talk to us and, and for us to, to get some of their ideas and thoughts. And so, you see, we, we had several stations set up around the room for folks to, to stop and, and look at different subject areas, topic areas, and then leave us comments. We got a lot, you can see there, the folks were placing Post-it notes on boards. We then took all those comments, put them together in a, in a comprehensive list, and so that really represented the, the two first boxes in this little small flow chart, was we started, you know, as a staff at, at looking at that focused assessment, we then needed to get public input on what, what the citizens felt, and then that led us into the beginning of development of the, of the draft plan. The city enlisted the services of a local consultant, and that consultant met regularly with city staff members, the different areas, you know, whether it be public works, or, or police, or housing in neighborhoods, whatever the case may be. And so, that eventually led to putting together the six core subject areas that you now see in the, in the draft plan. Housing in neighborhoods, commercial in corridors, transportation issues, police and law enforcement, parks and recreation, and then public works. But there's a lot of crossover between all of these, so you see a lot in, in the plan where, you know, some of these other areas are, are touched on in, in multiple chapters. So, in terms of the structure of the plan document itself, in addition to the, you know, introduction and background that's placed in each chapter as you, as you tackle that subject area, the, the real core of each of these chapters are the goals and strategies. So, you, this is sort of a condensed version that we've put together also that you see depicted on the screen here, but what you get is an overarching or primary goal for that subject area, for the Lorre Village, and then you get a list of possible or potential strategies or tools that can be used to achieve the goal. Also included in the plan are a series of maps. Here, you see one that was produced by our, our Public Works Department, looking at infrastructure needs in the, in the Lorre Village. Also, you see some proposed phasing opportunities for some of the implementation strategies for housing in neighborhoods, for instance. You see some, some depictions of different possibilities for nodes of redevelopment in commercial areas, and then you see broader scale depictions of all sorts of scenario plans for large-scale redevelopments, public-private partnerships, corridor or intersection improvements, things of that nature. So then, once the, the draft document was put together, we held a final public workshop. More than 300 people attended that workshop, as you can see in some of these pictures, it was held in one of the, one of the future commercial spaces out in the, in the Lorre Mill itself. We were very happy with that attendance. I don't recall any planning meeting we've ever hosted during my 15 years with the city to have anywhere near that type of turnout. And overwhelmingly, the responses were positive. We've continued to get a few comments here and there. This image here is showing how, following that meeting, we placed a draft version of the plan, or actually, prior to the meeting even, even taking place, and ever since then, to this day, the draft of the plan has been on the city's website, and we've encouraged folks to, you know, continue to provide us comments on that. So, excuse me. And in closing for the slideshow, just wanted to give you a summary, a short summary of the outreach efforts throughout the planning process, and, you know, especially related to those two primary public meetings. We mailed postcards to, to every address within the plan area boundary. Posters and flyers were placed in a number of different civic and institutional buildings and other types of facilities in, in the Lorre Village area and, and even beyond. We had social media posts, we used the city's blackboard technology to do the automated calls to plan area residents. We utilized various events calendars to make sure folks were aware of the meetings. And then, as I've mentioned already, the links on to the city's website to also make sure that, that, that folks who couldn't make it to the meetings had access to the plan document and could review and provide us comments also. So, with that being said, it, it has been common in the past during other planning processes that, that the city has undertaken over the previous years or even decades, that both the Planning Commission and the city council will often ask that, that this, that this hearing be started and then tabled, maybe for a month, like 30 days later, so that, you know, any additional review you all want to do of the document can take place in that time period. Doesn't mean, of course, that it has to be done that way, but, you know, if, if you all had specific questions for me here tonight, and you, and you wanted to take a different course, you know, we'll be happy to bring it, bring it back to you or to finish up tonight. So, as I mentioned before, Alec Long is present from the Planning Commission. As you'll notice in your agenda packet, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend adoption of, of the Lorre Village Area Plan. They did take a few extra specific votes on certain areas of concern or discussion, and you can see those listed, one through six, in your agenda packet. With regard to some of those, if you have some questions about why there was specific concern, perhaps Commissioner Long or, or myself can, can shed some light on that. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Thompson or Mr. Long? Mr. Pierce, all.
Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
How much has this proposal, draft, plan, whatever you want to call it, how much does this cost so far to implement or to put together?
The, the production of the plan document, or?
All of it, from start to finish. I mean, you've been working on this, you said 30 staff members have worked on those different things. What, what do we have invested in this plan at this point?
Outside.
Give me a rough estimate.
Well, let's see, outside consulting was $9,000, around $9,000, and now the staff time, calculating it, I don't know, probably at least another $5,000 or more dollars, maybe more. Yeah. And see, it's been over a period of time. I don't, yes, significant.
Significant. That's, that's my point, I assume. And, and why did we start doing this?
Because of that $40 million investment in the heart of our city that we worked 21 years to get, and low and behold, these folks from California and Atlanta decided to actually pull the trigger and, and make that big investment, and we thought, wow, let's try to leverage that, because you get that kind of investment in an older neighborhood like this, you know, that doesn't happen every day. It doesn't, you know, and so, what we want to try to do is be prepared and work to try to let this spread, because what we want to do is, is have this economic development really infect all the area around it and stabilize the neighborhood and, and grow that Lorre neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods around there, so our center city is more stable and economically prosperous, and the tax rate increase, not rate, excuse me, tax base increases, so actually, the rate doesn't have to. But, and it's opportunity for housing and jobs and a quality of life in the heart of the city that we really desperately need.
And I get that. It was kind of a... And I get that. It was kind of a rhetorical question, almost really, but I understand there's a $40 million investment, and I think we should take advantage of that. But I'm going to tell you, the first time I saw this report was outside of the agenda, and then, once we got our agenda, I spent quite a few hours reading through this. And I got to tell you, more than it makes me happy, it makes me very angry, very angry. Because I look at things, and I'm not going to take up the council's time, because I've got so many marks in here, it's ridiculous, but, you know, the economic and physical health of a city is only assured if all of its geographic areas enjoy vitality. That's on Exhibit 69 there, number one. And I like that. The economic and physical health of a city is only assured if all of its geographic areas enjoy vitality. And that's one of the reasons I'm sitting here on this council, because the actual area I live in doesn't enjoy vitality. I've complained and complained and complained about conditions of roads, trying to get sidewalks. Any kind of investment, and I'm always told, there's no money. We don't do sidewalks that way. Well, then I open up this plan, and because somebody plopped $40 million on Lorre, we're going to put decorative sidewalks, not just sidewalks, decorative sidewalks. Streets, we need to improve thoroughfare. There again, I'm not against improving Lorre. I'm just saying, how much longer do the rest of the areas of the city have to beat their head against the wall to get minor improvements when we're suggesting opening the bank and pouring it out? I mean, how are we going to pay for all this? And are the areas that I'm talking about going to continue to suffer at the expense of Lorre Mill? They got a $40 million project plopped in their lap, great. That should be incentive enough for the property owners to improve over there. We are talking about doing programs where the city helps paint houses. We're talking about programs where the city helps people outside of the federal government and state government grants, where the city will use local dollars to help with down payment assistance on homes. And there's several things in here. One of them, let me find it, because this is a really good one. It says the, that they should do away with unnecessary red tape.
What page?
That would be on Exhibit 623. Really? We're going to, we're going to do away with unnecessary red tape? Why do we have necessary red tape? But what is that? I mean, what kind of comment are we making? If you're in Lorre, we're going to give you special treatment and not hold you up with anything, but if you're outside of Lorre, we're going to hold you up. I, I, I know a builder right now that would love to start building in my area. He can't even get the city to respond on half these things. I mean, I'm not telling you, I, I'm not kidding when I tell you something that should have made me happy and, and say, this is great, this is great for the city. The more and deeper I got into it, made me mad. And that is my honest opinion about it, because some of the very things in here that we're proposing to do at Lorre, I've been asking and asking and asking, and all I'm told is, it can't be done, it can't be done with, with code enforcement. I'm told all the time, we can't do anything about code enforcement. There's a section in here that references that and even gives the state statute that mandates what we can and can't do on, on code enforcement. And then the paragraph after that basically says, but there's kind of ways around that. It's, and if you want the reference on that, it's Exhibit 6-20, it's number seven. It says, "The ability to do systematic periodic code enforcement in the neighborhood has been significantly constrained by the 2011 action of the North Carolina General Assembly. However, it does not mean that code enforcement cannot be done in a neighborhood with special priority." I've been asking for that for, before I got on council, so we're going on five or six years. Been told it can't happen. But for Lorre, we can do it. "This can be done with a combination of special curbside attention given by inspectors, public information, and neighborhood and property owner organizations, especially the community watch. Currently, the most significant constraint on increasing emphasis in code enforcement is the city's reduced staffing and code enforcement personnel." And if you keep reading it, suggests later on that perhaps we should have code enforcement at the community watch meetings for Lorre Mill. Novel idea, but we're too constrained to send them to other areas of the city. Not liking this at all. And I'll step off my soapbox, everybody else can have fun with it, but I did want to put my two cents in on that.
Yes, sir, Dr. Curlin and then.
Yeah, I don't know where to begin, man. You just derailed me. So, but I'll try and recover real quickly here. So, but, well, I, I want to respond to something that you said, because I thought you said a lot of good things. I really do. So, so, refresh my memory, staff. Have we done some type of Highland area planning process?
We, we have done a series of Highland, Highland area plans. And Highland is a much different neighborhood than it was before we started them. So, we've had probably seven or eight Highland area plans, yes.
Right. So, so what, what, you know, I'm asking that question because, you know, we have to bring perspective to all these things. You know, so, so the question is, and, and boy, you make some great points, and I want to hear more, okay, because if, if you're not getting your, your things addressed over in your neck of the woods, okay, then we need to be looking at that just as much as we need to be looking at this situation. But also with, with this plan, you know, we need to have some, some set of, you know, where's the well-hanging fruit here? Because this is a great plan, but, you know, okay, so we approved this plan. What's the first step post-approval of the plan as to exactly what those things are that we can achieve, you know, in short order for minimal cost? You know, so, and then where's the last Highland plan, and where's the checkoff sheet on that? Okay, so, and where's the West Gastonia plan, and where's whatever? You know what I'm saying? So, we, you know, we, we've got a lot of work to do, you know, because if you start to think about it, there's, there's a lot of work that can be done. Now, I think this was a necessary piece of work because of the timeliness of the project. So, I'm going to support this. You know, the, the Planning Commission made some good comments, and they're very astute, and there are a lot of people involved with real estate and construction, and, and I think some of those were very well-made points, and they need to be addressed also. So, as we go forward, I think we need to be looking at each of those things that they commented on and, and address those, you know, in short order too. But I guess the, the question I would have, because I would approve this plan, would be, again, directing staff to say, okay, now come back to us more specifically and say, what, what's the goals of year one? What's the goals of year two? What's the goals of year three? You know, and what are the budgetary, you know, impacts of that? And where do we fit that in and give our police, you know, department, you know, appropriate compensation, as well as the rest of the general employees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? You know, so, plans are great, but I, I, I want to see something happen with these plans, not just have a great-looking document with wonderful ideas, thousands of hours, you know, were spent in this. I know, you know, chemotively, and, and I want to see a lot of this go forward, but I want to make sure Councilman Pierceall's issues are, are addressed too. And I want to hear them, and I want to know about them, and we want to support him too. So.
Thank you, Your Honor. Todd, I think on a couple of these issues, we, not that I'm a big person on this stuff, it sounds like we were chailing each other. I did get that whole, where's our necessary red versus our unnecessary. And secondly, although there is a major investment here through a number of grant initiatives, I get what you're saying as far as, so how much does the tail wag the dog here? And to Dr., your point, I, I have somewhat of a reluctance of the, of voting for this without the necessary milestones and dollar amounts necessary to reach those milestones that are contained in the plan. And also, Alec, I would like you to, item number one, Exhibit 61, in reference to 113, gives me some heartburn too, I got to tell you. The public concern about the public financing for both residential and non-residential incentives in ensuring a reasonable return for investors. I don't know, it sounds like we're trying to guarantee something that's really not guaranteeable in a capitalist budget. What do you, what do you think about that?
That was our main issue through this whole document, was, is considered gap funding. It was going to make the investor whole. He was not, it's almost like he's guaranteed not to lose money to go in and buy houses around, which we know, every, I've been here all my life, that, some of the, that area, some of the houses, some of the houses just need to be some attention to, but I don't believe the city needs to come in and guarantee my investment through a gap funding measure. But that being said, and hearing Mr. Pierceall with what he had to say, we do have that mill there, if you like it or don't like it. It is an opportunity that I see, and what you're talking about, how much you want to spend on it, that's, that is the big, the big issue. Around that area, that part of Gastonia, and I'm from West Gastonia, we need, it needs attention really bad. So, I don't know, you know, what it's going to take, but you already have that building there. It is a beautiful building. You have people coming to that building, and the only way you're going to get more people to come to that building is improve the area. And like I say, I don't know how you get to that point, but that's, in my opinion, you just, we just have to have some type of improvement. And I don't know if it's, you know, I hate to say the word taxes, but the whole end of town, we just need some big-time improvement.
That's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation, and, and that has been my biggest heartburn on Exhibit 623, 6-23. A, okay, is the city budgets a sum of money for initial implementation? It should be enough to affect the buy, rehab, resale for owner occupancy of 20 houses within the targeted area, filling only the financially feasibility gap. That, that's the part that concerns me.
Me too.
Now, I don't disagree one bit about what West Gastonia needs, okay? It, it, it's better than it was, and Lorre is making some improvements to that area. And, and I think that West Gastonia is going to be what, what we all envision at some point in time. But when I see that the, the city is going to possibly help fund some of this through the budget, I don't see how we can fund everything that we've got on the budget right now.
Right.
I mean, we've got the, the police department that is our public safety. We've got to take care of those things, and, and I will have to say, you know, we need to get those priorities in, in place. West Gastonia needs help, the Highland area needs help, South Gastonia needs help. Some of those areas down in South Carolina, South Gastonia look like a third-world country, okay? They don't even have paved roads on some of them. So, I don't know how we can justify something like that. Now, am I against the plan? No. I don't think it's, I don't think it's complete yet because of where the money's going to be coming from and all that kind of stuff. And how are we going to prioritize year one, year two? Okay? I know in one of the pictures here on page Exhibit 622, that red line there, that's number one, and that's what they're wanting, that's what they have identified is, this area should include within the initial phase, okay? But I don't think we're there yet. So, that, thank you.
I think to go along with this, and, I'll come on, ask the city manager, possibly Jason there too, I'd love to know. There's one little bugaboo. I'm sort of being away from this plan, but it's the same subject. You know, in, in all the years, us West Gastonia boys and the business that we're in, I have a, I have a really hard time with, if, no matter which media it is, those, they're broke, don't have any money. Well, now, we were, we inherited this, and the county is in it too. And it is beautiful. If this guy comes up here and, and they've got 60 or 70 people, this guy comes over from Charlotte or whatever and says they promised him this and they promised him that, is it true or is it not true? I mean, this is not really that, it's big, but it's not. I mean, did you, are you, are you out of money? Are you, are you promising these people this and not giving it to them? No comment. That just absolutely undoes me. I cannot believe, after all they've asked for, and I sat up there at Lorre and talked to the guy from LA that was, you know, used to much, he, he, they say he's multimillionaire, and, and I don't understand, Ed, are they broke?
You know what? I think what we could do is just actually have them come and talk to us sometime and talk to us about exactly where they are. That, that is such a large project. I think that, you know, they, they have tackled it. It, they had a general schedule of when they wanted to be done, and then they had a revised schedule of when they were wanting to be done, and then they had a revised, revised schedule of when they wanted to have it done. And it, it does seem like that project, because of its complexity and its size, has really caused them to be much further delayed than they had promised. And, and they're the ones that lose the money, you know, because they want to get that done so they can get revenue coming back in. I, I'm not specifically privy to where they are right now. I have had conversations with some of the people that live there that have talked about that, that they're awaiting the amenities, but they like it. A lot of them were actually, after the article, said, well, you know, it's not that bad, it's not that bad. But I really think maybe what we could do is get a full report as to where they are. I, I believe that it is the third floor that they have yet to do. I think we have a temporary CO on everything other than the third floor. Once that's done, then all of Phase One will be finished. Their commercial leasing is Bob Clay, and Bob Clay will have to find out kind of where he is with that. I know there, there were two, two or three facilities they talked about. I think it, they, they don't have all of those there. I think there's one that actually maybe signed the lease, but there, there is, I, I think maybe the best thing is actually get the developer to come and, and talk to us about where they are, you know, some of the delays and what caused their delays, and kind of where they're, where they're heading for the future. Give them an opportunity to, to explain to us kind of where we all are.
I just think that it would, I think it would behoove them in, in the business they're in. Started with Billy Hughes and John Gunford, who's very nice people. I think it would behoove them to have an answer, an honest answer to the media if they're in the business of leasing this property, instead of saying, no comment. And we are, we're in this, we're in this game with them. And I, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised. Yeah, it's big, this is a phase, this is a phase, it's not the West Wing over there, and it's, and it is wonderful. And I'm, you know, I'm, I'm 100% for it, as Brendan said, but that, that, that part really does, I don't know any place it's ever done. And by the way, this has been done all over the country. This is not the first time a mill has been renovated, but, and they're doing a good job. But I believe I'd stick a little closer to get those things leased and get the, get the commercial. They, I understand he, there's a Planet, not, not them, but a similar Planet Fitness-type thing, it's going to go in, lease space in there, a gym or whatever, fitness center. And that's good. But I just, I would really be bragging about that and trying to get folks to, they, they said that so many said what you said they, they said, that they like it over there, that I've heard. But every time that I have noticed that the media goes after, to ask a question, they don't get an answer.
Right.
Don't get an answer. And that's, that's not the way it's done. So, maybe it's.
Because you're, you're in the sales business.
You're, you're definitely in the sales business.
You're, you're definitely in the sales business, and you've got competition. And if your word's good, and you say you're gonna, or if there's a holdup, as there always is in construction, there can be, weather, materials, money, banks, HUD, they're definitely involved with this, so, and the county, and the city, but level, and I think they should do that. So maybe they are, to a point, but you can't let, make them go away. By the way, on a brighter note, I, I bet very few people know where Greasy Corner came from. I do, but I don't know if it's right or not.
I do.
All right? Okay, go ahead, tell us where.
Oh, no, I, I just, you know, I know about Greasy Corner, and I-
No, I'm, how'd you get that name?
Well, from the restaurants that were there, from what I was told, but I also know somebody that, that got a speeding ticket on Greasy Corner from Drag Racing on Franklin.
Sounds like your husband.
No, what, no, but it was somebody in my family.
Uh-oh.
So, yeah, they got, yeah.
Well, the word came down to me that a truck came through town that had grease in it, and turned over, and they, somebody named it Greasy. Did you hear that?
I heard it.
Maybe we're right. Okay. Just gotta lighten it up a little bit there, Helen. You learned something.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Alec or Jason? By the way, this, I, I did open the public hearing, if y'all didn't hear that, I said it real, real loud. Is there any questions, either one of these gentlemen?
No, thank you all.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we'll take these comments, and any other comments you have between now and, and next month, I mean, we can bring this back and discuss it further, and, and, and make amendments and changes, and write it the way we want it to say. But I will say about these plans, they're long-range plans, and they're vision documents, essentially. And, and I think of the plans and the development that we did in Highland, and I think of a lot of the projects we did. We did an early one on recreation years ago, and then low and behold, we got money later to build the, the community centers. So it, because there were, the, this is years and years ago, that they said they wanted to have a community center in each part of the town. So it just so happened that there got to be funding for that. It wasn't local funding, we were able to use state and federal funding, and we built this. And so then later, there was Recreation Advisory Committee, again, a long-range plan. And then you, you, you put the plan out there as a vision, how much of it you can fund, and, and I thoroughly agree with what you're saying, because if you just look at what we're looking at in terms of just, you know, things that we have to spend money on, how much real discretionary money are we gonna have in the next three years? You know, very, very limited. But we are also not tied to only doing Lowry. This council has, you know, we, we've done some work over on Modena, for instance, that Modena sidewalk. And the Modena area isn't any planned area, but we just decided that that's where we want to make an improvement. And I think the same thing is with the other neighborhoods. It doesn't have to have this glorious plan for us to be able to make improvements. We've got to make, we've got to try to make improvements everywhere, but we have just a little bit of money. So we'll have to try to do the best job we can each year to prioritize, and each year to try to make some progress. And, but, but we'll go back, and if you have any other comments and things that you think should come out of here, or things that should be reworded, just shoot them to Jason, and then we'll start to accumulate those things, and then come back. And if there's a lot of it, we might even come back, not July, we might even come back in, in August or something like that.
Question. Okay, if there are changes, does it have to go back to the Planning Commission again? No, okay, that's fine. Because I don't want to hold up the process by having it go back to Planning Commission every time there's a revision.
Ash, go ahead.
I would just propose that you continue this public hearing to that next meeting, and that way you won't have to do all that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, my question was with regard to staff and this process that went on, how much input was there received from the real estate development community? And, I mean, you know, there's, there's a lot of language that talks about, you know, the private sector investment process and things like that. And I wondered, you know, I mean, that sounds good on paper, but did we really get people who are knowledgeable about these types of projects to be able to come forward and give, you know, some significant advice as to, you know, where this has worked in other places, and if so, what was the structure of the deal, so to speak?
We, you know, I can't speak to every conversation, of course, that, that every member of staff may have had, but what I can say is during those formal public meetings, there were multiple real estate professionals who had interests in, in that geographic area that attended. We spoke to quite a few, both in those meetings and just with folks visiting the planning office, or calling us, or emailing us, that were, you know, investors in, in the neighborhood, folks who owned three, four, or five houses. And, and so that's where a lot of those potential strategies related to, you know, rehabilitation and of, of houses in the neighborhood, and, and looking at getting values up in the neighborhood and stabilized, that's where a lot of that came from. But, you know, as with any planning document, and, and as Ed was saying, you know, it's, it's a vision plan, it's a policy document, it's not intended to specifically commit resources, it's just putting in place a set of potential ways you could get from A to Z, you know, from, from where you are to where the goal is where you want to be. So, you know, where we came up with, with, with a lot of that, and, and most of the discussion on the plan revolved around the housing and neighborhood section, and dealing with those issues, and then law enforcement, and then also Franklin Boulevard. And so, you know, when, when we were contacted by folks, including real estate professionals and investors and stakeholders in the neighborhood, those were the, those were always the things they were, they were talking about most. Hopefully that, does that get to?
I mean, I really like to know, you know, again, where's the next step with that process?
Well-
You know, because, you know, we adopt this plan, I, I want to see something happen and sooner than later.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's not going to be, just because of the nature of, of some of this, it's not gonna be like massively overnight, or anything, we don't have those dollars, and we're not in a position to control the property either, it's in private hands. But there's some, some, some projects we can work on pretty, pretty soon. Preservation North Carolina owns some units, and we're working with them, and they're talking about moving another house within the neighborhood. We're trying to come up with a few of these projects, because what you're trying to do is change the, the mindset of the community, because the values are very low. If you can get some new investment, some restoration of some of these, then it can catch fire, because we will not be able to, to be in a position to, you know, broadly subsidize the whole neighborhood or anything like that. We're just trying to prime the pump, to try to get folks excited about it. And if that neighborhood then can stabilize, then we can move to the next neighborhood, and we'll, and, and, you know, I mean, you want to, and it's not really that you're only there, I mean, you want all of these neighborhoods to be going up at the same time. We've really not had a gentrification of a neighborhood in Gastonia. We've, Yorkchester has stabilized, it, it is a wonderful neighborhood, but we need other center-city neighborhoods to have that kind of rise in value. And that, that's, and how do you get it going? How do you get, change the real estate market? You need something, why someone wouldn't live there, well, you could build a park, and, and we did. And you can have that big mill, and, and we can improve. It's, it's just gonna not, like, the work we did in Highland took decades to do. I mean, and, and we're not, and you could go to Highland, you're not finished, but it's certainly a completely different neighborhood than it was 40 years ago. And that'll be true with all these, it just, just does take a long time to, to actually implement when it's private property. It's not really, we don't own all that land.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed, going back to kind of the laundry list that you're creating, what I would like to see in, in the plan is when we have monetary milestones, in other words, when we get to X, this is what it's gonna cost us to get there, okay? And I also don't want, and to your point, Todd, I don't want to see a systemic abandonment of some of the goals that you have for your neighborhood, and a shift of those priorities and those resources just because we finished the mill. I get that that's a big deal, but we also, you've been, we've been working on some of those other areas, your, your area, for many years. And, and I don't want to see this, the latest, newest thing on the block get everything, and then we put these on the back burner. There's a lot of pumps to be, to continue to be primed. And so I, again, if we can attach monetary values to these different steps, I think would be extremely helpful. Thank you, sir.
You need a motion to continue?
I will second that.
So, motion to continue the public hearing to July 21st?
Yes.
No, it's August, I thought you said.
Well, it would be whatever council desired, but-
What, Ed said August.
August? Ed, did you say August?
I believe we talked about July initially, but, but we could, yeah, if, if there's a lot of work to do, we could push it to August. Do they want to do August?
That's the 18th.
Could be the fir-, first meeting in August?
Okay, that's the fourth.
First meeting in August? Which is the fourth?
Yeah. I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
To continue the public hearing.
Just to continue the public hearing.
To the first meeting in August. Two meetings away.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor? Close. Thank you. Thank you both, guys. Thank you very much. Move the public hearing to be closed. The Outage Management Software Agreement, DataVoice International, presentation of Mr. Michael Peakle, who's Director of Enterprise Services. I will have to say that when I first looked at that, Mike, I thought it said outrage, but, but then I read closer.
See if I can figure it out. All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Opportunity to discuss outage management tonight. I would like to show my appreciation to Matt and to Todd, Technology Services and Water and Sewer, for partnering with the electric department in getting this together tonight. So I have about 47 slides to go through. Hopefully we'll get finished really quick, because I'm really excited about software programs. I know Todd is, on a day-to-day basis, but I usually am not, but I am tonight. We're gonna get through this pretty quick, I only have a couple of things I would like to share with you as far as specifics go, so we'll start with, what does DataVoice do? It does all of these things that you can see hopefully on the screen, probably not very well. For you, though, I have prepared a, a little gold key to the city that has this presentation, and also an example of what you can download at home and play around with as far as some of the mapping things that we'll talk about later on. So here are some of the things that are offered by DataVoice, most of which are included in this software that is proposed for you tonight. All right, so the team includes what we just discussed, Tech Services, Electric, Water and Sewer. Staff has been discussing outage management improvements for some time now. We did take the, the bus down to Rock Hill to evaluate their use of DataVoice, and they've implemented this system for over two years, and are very satisfied with that. And then we also hosted the CEO of DataVoice, Roy Rooker, he came down and met with the whole entire project team, answered other questions that we had about implementation and use in Gastonia, and then also some specific areas in Water and Sewer that we could probably partner with them on in improving not only here in Gastonia, but their system-wide. So that's, that's a great opportunity for us, and he was very excited about that. We have had a relationship with DataVoice for the last 10 years, and providing some services through Tech Services. The biggest thing here is that this interfaces with the existing Kianna billing system, so the customer information is already available. This will prepare not only electric, but Water and Sewer as well, to respond to outages and deploy resources in hopefully providing service to those that are out. That is the number-one goal of this system. Some of the neat things is what I would say with, with this, is that there's a mobile app that you're gonna be able to download on your phone for free in any of the Android or Apple bases there. So what that will do is provide the customer the ability to report outages per their mobile phone. Because a lot of you have, like me, I have a, a home phone, well, without power, that's gonna be pretty much useless. So a mobile application in all instances should work. You're reporting outages, you're viewing a map of outages across the entire system, and then you're also able to receive text messages saying when the department looks at restoring services to your area. Another great function of this is the system offers you, as elected officials, managers, also real-time information through a mobile application that we'll have on smartphones or iPads or any other mobile devices. And then that also allows our folks in the field, the linemen, to have that mobile device there in front of them too, that's driven with GIS maps, they have our system on there, and they're going to be able to see real-time where the outages are, and what our next step is in restoring power to the greatest number of customers. I know this is gonna be a very difficult look at, but this is, this is what this would, would be like whenever we're entering information, whenever the customer calls in. So you'll see the specific things that we would be asking. And then this is the number that they can provide, if it's not already provided by the caller ID, for how we can communicate back with them. This is an example of the outage map, showing some of the areas here of the system, and then the red is where the outages would be. This is what this would look like whenever we do have outages. All right, this is the website that anyone would be able to go to, compatible, of course, with all browsers and devices, using Google Maps, and then from the website, you're gonna be able to report outages as well. And then also request notifications per any device. And this is the mobile app, this is what it would look like, and you can actually, and on this, it will, it will have the, the link on how to get there. You can download this app and play around with Magic Valley Electric Co-op as a customer of DataVoice, and you can download that and actually see what this looks like real-time on your own phone. But this is also what is available per the mobile app. And there's the Magic Valley Electric Co-op's site on how they market this service. And also the little iPhone on the right shows some of the text messages that the system produces to the customer. Here is the smartphone application for elected officials and managers, showing your overall outage statistics, also the maps, you know, where it shows the system and where the outages currently are, outages by district, and all outage tickets. You can actually, per the device, follow where the actual asset is, where the crew is, per their mobile device that's deployed out into the field. It also interfaces with the AVL system that we're currently working on through a CMAC grant application that should be coming hopefully in the next three to six months to you after we send that out for proposals. So it actually will work with a secondary system. Here's some other things that you're able to see on the actual mobile device, per the application, outages. And this is a link that's also featured on the, on the little key to take back with you for more examples. Caller information, as we would see it, as we receive it at the call center, whenever we experience outages. And in a time of a large outage, or even a small outage if we choose to, we could use the IVR system, which is going to be able to respond to a customer with, okay, we identify per your caller ID where you're at, or they could enter in an account number, and it would show them who that would be, and then it gives us the opportunity to get back in touch with them by calling or texting however they would like to enter that information, so that we could let them know about restoration times. So we're actually able to communicate back with them, and not just know, okay, well, the power's on, you might not be at your house, so you're able to get that information wherever you're at. you're at about when power is restored or Water and Sewer. All right, so, the cost to implement, and this is also in the memo in the agenda package, we're sharing the project costs between our three departments. Total cost is $114,140. And that includes all the software installation, data prep, and integration with our existing systems. And then, annual maintenance costs, about $19,000 after the first year. And then, a little bit about the schedule. This is going to take some time. These are all the steps that we have to take, and we're prepared, if this is accepted, to move ahead with the project kickoff at the end of the month. But we've talked about making sure that this is done correctly. We would hate to roll out something that's not usable and understood by the public, that you have the ability to download these things and use these things, it's available to you on a website. And then, also, what it would be like in a mass outage if you didn't talk to a real person up front. You still do have that opportunity to talk to a real person, but the understanding that your information has been received and that we're going to communicate back with you as we can while we're restoring your power. So, this could take as long as six months, really, to implement, but we want to make sure that we do it right the first time and that it works. So, be happy to answer any questions that you have on the...
Mayor, I want to say, we've been working at trying to do this for years, and we finally think we have that software that's going to work for us, that's going to be usable, and it's really exciting. I think we're going to be able to help our citizens and also manage our outages better. And so, you know, we're taking a big, big step, and we're, we just wanted to share that with you and with, you know, everyone listening, because we're going to be in a much better position in the future when we have these outages, and if you ever have a really big one, you'll be able to have a lot more capability than we've ever had in the past.
Okay. We need to approve that.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve.
Second here.
Second, any discussion?
I want to know when I can get it on my phone.
I know, right? Can you do that?
Can we do that tonight?
Tomorrow.
Can we pass this?
Somebody else will do that.
Yeah? Yeah? I'm going to Magic Valley.
Going to Magic Mountain?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand. Thank you. Item nine, discussion of ABC System, presentation of Mr. Councilman Kemp.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things I wanted to bring forward to the council. First of all, I believe that you all have a personal invitation to the opening of the brand-new store on Jet Linear Drive on July 13th at 8:30 a.m. And, Your Honor, I believe that you're going to be asked to make the first purchase at 0900 at 9 o'clock, and there's going to be a special commemorative product offering at that time specifically for our ABC board. But more than that, I just wanted to take, I spoke with, and we happen to have Chairman Howard, is it, the ABC Chairman Howard is in the audience tonight, and I just wanted to also move back for a second and take a look at what the ABC board has distributed since 2010. And in 2010, it was $700,000. 2011, $820,000. 2012, $400,000. 2013, $650,000. Last year was $400,000, and we don't have the figures for 2015 yet, because obviously our fiscal year is not up. But that's in addition to the land for the fire station, Martha Rivers Park, the 800, part of the 800 megahertz communication system for police and fire, the alcohol prevention programs, and also some of the abuse rehabilitation programs. And why I bring this up, twofold, really. Number one, because of the opening of our brand-new store, but also because there's been talk, media, various social media outlets that, about privatization of the ABC system. And I have some grave concerns about that and what that would mean for our city, both as a loss of revenue, but also as a loss of community involvement. And I want to continue to make the council aware and to seek support for our system, because I think they've done a tremendous job over the years. They're not compensated very much, hardly at all. And we have, I think, with the departure of Mr. Beck, who did a stellar job, have a new person in there that is bringing some fresh new ideas and new strategies to go ahead and increase our sales. And so, I didn't want us to lose sight of, just because we're opening a new store, this is the end of the chapter. It's not. They're going to continue to do work out in the community, and they're going to continue to support this community. And I don't believe that would be served as well with privatization. So, that's what I wanted to just briefly bring forth, and I hope to see is all there on the 13th. It's going to be a great new store. And, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not speaking out of turn, John, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. But thank you for coming. Chairman? That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Kemp? Okay. Item 10 is the Citizen Committee Appointments Needed for 2015-16 Again, and it's item 10. Last, as far as you can go on here. Any comments?
Mr. Wester has asked a couple of folks, one of which will agree to serve on the board of children there for Ward 5.
Yeah.
And they're out of town, and they were, they're in the next meeting.
Okay.
And I have, I do not have a nomination for Ward 6 for that position, Community Development.
Okay. It'll keep popping up. His head here. Yes, sir?
I do have a nomination for Ward number one, the Recreation Advisory Committee. Mr. Tim Towner, he's been involved as a, tremendously involved in the Boy Scouts, and if you remember that name, we had just honored his boy here at the last meeting at City Hall. I apologize, his resume got caught in the printer or the copier, so we kind of get that straightened out. Just very briefly, he works at Stiles Machinery. He's been an assistant scout leader. He's been involved in the McAdenville Athletic Club from 2006 to present as a baseball coach, T-ball coach, pitching coach, and he's also been involved as a basketball coach and in Pop Warner Football. From 2008 to 2009, he was president of the McAdenville Athletic Club, including, inclusive of seven football teams, seven cheerleading squads, and approximately 290 children in the program. And he's also been the executive board member of that program since 2012, serving in any stop, get, measure that he could to continue the program along. So, with that, I would like to offer to the board Tim Towner's appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board for Ward number one.
T-O-W-N-E-R.
Yes, that is correct. T-I-M-T-O-W-N-E-R.
I'd like to close nominations.
Is there, did we have a second?
I don't think we need a second.
Do we need a second?
No.
To close nominations, yes.
Second, close nominations. Does he have any interest or experience with recreational activities?
No, he's actually kind of just flying blind with his...
He just wants to get into it.
He actually, I had mentioned to Mayor Protem that, you know, he and I were going to be talking, he's actually pretty excited about that, you know, the children are getting older and kind of going off to college, and I think he'll be, I think he'll like him, too.
Anybody that's been an assistant scout master has to be good.
Made the paper.
Can we give this to Jenny and see if we can...
Okay, there's a motion, second, to close. We'll go ahead and vote. Okay? You got that? Okay. Is that all on the appointments this time? Okay. Item 11 is the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, two things first. I distributed a memorandum in response to the questions that had been raised about Culinaire at the June 2nd meeting, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to discuss that. If not, you can use that instead of your Somnax tonight.
Right.
Second item, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to ask you to ask to be excused for this next item, because it involves City of Gastonia versus Nantowers LLC and Park Sterling Bank on the New Hope Road widening.
I shall move.
Second here.
Ms. Craig.
Ms. Craig. Madam Mayor, Protem, the New Hope Road widening project, we have about 26 property owners that we're having to acquire easements from. Nantowers LLC has owned the property at 605 South New Hope for over 20 years, and so it was necessary to acquire an easement from Nantowers LLC. As I've previously advised you all, because of state law involving contracts, the City Attorney's Office told the mayor that he would have to be subject to this lawsuit, and it would have to come before you all for settlement. So, the amount of the settlement, it's a minor settlement, it's $9,500. It's been negotiated by Representatives of HDR, the right-of-way negotiating company that the city hired as part of this CMAC project, and they have agreed on that acquisition price with the defendants. And so, if the council will approve that, we will enter a consent judgment with the court. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Any questions?
Second here. Second here.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor of the settlement? Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all I had, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you.
Item 12, City Manager's Report. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the legislature's still in session. The Senate has produced their, some of their budget. The sales tax doesn't seem to affect us. If it's all structured the way they have it, we will actually do a little better. But some of that has to do with whether or not the state actually broadens the sales tax. And if they don't broaden the sales tax, then they'll recalculate all of that. So, we're still watching that, and we're still not 100% sure where we'll be, and probably won't be that until they adjourn sometime later on this summer. But there's transportation bill and a number of others that affect our pile bill funding, and I think most cities and the league of municipalities are just trying to hold even, for the most part, and trying to get with the House and Senate, you know, something that keeps us from losing any revenue. There might be that possibility of the business, similar to the, what we have as business privilege license, there may be an opportunity to bring something like that back, but that's still not finalized, and that's all I have.
All right, sir. Item 13 is City Council Report. Greg?
No report, sir.
Right here.
No report.
Pierce Hall?
No report.
Dr. Curley?
No report.
Walter Kemp?
Don't tease me like, don't tease me like that.
Hey, no, it's you and I. Get the hell good.
Just a couple of brief items, folks. Number one, attended the, we had the connect meeting, that's a subcomponent of COG, last week, and I think they have the potential for a great nexus with the Greater Gaston Development Corporation. I took all the information and dropped it off at the incoming president of the GGDC's office, so he could review that. I wanted to take a moment to just recognize a fellow that, I think he does a great job in the community. I know, most of, all of us know where Badcock Furniture is, and the owner there takes it upon himself, there was an article about a month or so ago in the newspaper, and he's going to be doing it again with the upcoming Fourth of July. He goes through his neighborhood, and he puts out American flags on utility poles where he's already put a stanchion. He puts large flags, and he does that, great guy, he does it with his own cost, his own manpower. He maintains them, and he replaces them when necessary. And he's someone that really kind of known pretty well and kind of shuns the spotlight. But this is also what America's about, is when just a single person goes out to try and make a difference in their own area. Lastly, I went over to, two more items. I attended the first adoption committee meeting that the county had, and as that progresses forward, I hope to attend more, and I will report back to the City Council on that. And lastly, I was over at the mall today, and I met with the mall manager, and the tag service is open in the food court, and they're doing a great job. They intend to have monitors installed soon at the food court level, so actually, you could get a bite to eat or something to drink, instead of just sitting in the tag office, and you'll see your number come up, and you can just walk into the tag office and pick up your work. And if that starts to work well, they actually have plans to put them in a couple areas of the mall, so you'd actually be able to go out, do a little shopping, when your DMV work is done, just pop back in. It's a bright place, you sign in digitally when you get there, they have an ATM machine right inside, and they also have some new food partners that are going to be opening within the food court as well to service the customers. That was a great experience today, I think they're doing a good job. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, sir. You had one more?
I did, and thank you, Ash, for reminding me. I wanted to bring something forward and have maybe Ash, Ed, whatever staff members look for, and just get the council's input. Would you say it's an ordinance?
Yes.
It's an ordinance?
Section 4-21-1 of the city.
And currently, basically, to wrap it up in a nutshell, that ordinance prohibits any city employee from running for partisan political office. Now, there's a different ordinance that says if they run for the City of Gastonia, once they're elected, they have to resign their position. I would like to see this part of the ordinance removed, because what that is doing is prohibiting any city employee from running for county commission, if they live in another city, running for that, state office. It prohibits them basically from running for about anything that's partisan. And, you know, most of your municipal, I think we have one police officer that served on role, city council, but they can't run for county, they can't run for state, and I don't see the point in it, and I'd like to see that removed.
You know, these were all put in a lot of cities because of, like, the Hatch Act at the federal level.
Right.
To keep politics out of local government. And actually, but running for county commission and things like that, it really doesn't impact municipal. You probably ought to tighten the regulation in terms of having regular municipal employees running for office in their own city, because that does present a direct conflict, because you, it's hard to run for city council and also be a city employee. You really are wearing two completely different hats there. So, that, you know, maybe we could provide some flexibility for the, you know, to run for other offices, but for our own situation here, I think that's never really been a good idea.
Now, that brings up an interesting situation, though, because if staff does bring us back a report and recommendation, when do, when does the filing begin for this?
I believe it begins July 10th or the 16th, something like that. It's somewhere between, filing begins July 10th or the 16th, for the upcoming municipal elections, which are mostly nonpartisan, but I don't, does that filing also apply for any county commission seats? Or partisan seats that are coming up?
It's all nonpartisan?
No, county is partisan.
They're all partisan.
County is partisan.
No, I'm saying, the seats available with the next election within the county or for the state, either one, do we have anything coming up that's partisan that will be on the ballot in November of this year?
I'd have to check the...
I don't think so. Most cities are nonpartisan.
Correct.
You know, Charlotte is partisan. There's only a few that actually are partisan, but I don't think so. I think all the cities in North Carolina are, I mean, in Gaston County are nonpartisan, so we don't need it right now.
And there's no county or state that's going to be on the ballot this November?
That's correct.
Okay. Then that's fine. I was just going to say, if we run into a conflict there, I'd like to see it resolved before that, but it doesn't sound like we will, so we've got time. And that's all. Thank you.
I was very honored to be asked to say a word or two at the Citizens Police Academy graduation last night, and good people, and certainly the folks, Mike and Chief, they all did, Amy Hawkins did a marvelous job. She got so many comments, how good she was, and everybody was hugging her when it was over, but they've been together for a good while, and it's, their backup is what they are. are. They're not sworn police officers, but they, they've been, as we know, we know a lot of them over the years, and it's just, it's a great program, and I was just very glad to do it. And it's probably the first time in 100 years that I went somewhere with spread of food, and I didn't eat any, and they asked me to, but I didn't. That's my fault. They, please look on your announcements that on the 30th is Regional Mayor's Conference, right here at our conference center, you know, one time before, and I think it'll be a nice function. They come from all around, so that'll be at 6 o'clock. I'm looking on the list there. Any other?
You want to follow us, because are you inviting us to the evening?
Yes.
I think so. What, what's that add?
30th. It's actually two weeks to die. Mm-hmm.
Do you have, should you have anything to come?
We can do that. I think Jenny's got a list that she'll be sending something out to y'all, when she comes back, I guess, next week.
Are you going to...
Yes, that was the last thing I was going to mention. Some of us will be leaving, not too near future, early Friday morning to Springfield, Massachusetts. And of course, the ballgame, we've got three games. We've got a Friday ballgame, we've got a Saturday ballgame, and we've got a Sunday ballgame. As many of you know, the, Mr. Willie King, I think, is 97 years old, and he's still with us. He was, he's the only survivor of the 1934 incident, right here, just about where we're sitting right now, as a matter of fact, at Armington Hotel. And he's going to throw out the ball. Supposedly, governors, congressmen, and the other mayors and all will be there, so we're going to, several of us are going, and certainly, we're taking our Gastonia American Legion ball team, and the coach, and Chuck Dellinger's just done a wonderful job on this, his staff, and so, and certainly Regina and Jenny. The, so we're going to have three days of it up in Yankee Land and see what we can do. So I think these guys, it's going to be naturally very warm, I think they're really excited. First, they had graduation, some of them, and then, I don't know if they went to sneak to the beach, but they'll be back, they're leaving Thursday night and to go up there. So wish us luck, and they'll get, stay in the dorms at no charge from the college up there, and be fed by them. That's a lot, right there, for those age boys. So, and some of the parents are going, and so we're really, really excited about that. Okay, I certainly would look for a motion to adjourn. Let's just go. Thank you very much.
Second, your.